Welcome, we will now begin our pre-meeting work-study session for December 5th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
President.
Commissioner Hell.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will hand it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So for tonight's pre-meeting, we're devoting the entire study session to a review of our audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022, which was just completed. Our representative of our auditing firm is here tonight, along with our Finance Director Nathan Owen. So I will, Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
All right.
You could introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Brian Mosier with Clark Schaefer Hackett, the shareholder in charge of this audit, and it's good to be here live and in person, not hold up in my basement or wherever I was the last couple of years. So it's good to be with you all. Thanks for having me. And I'll just give a general overview of the audit results and then some of the high-level financial results that we saw, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have as we go through this as well. So you all have the presentations in front of you, and I think she's going to pull up on the screen, too. So to summarize our audit reports, that's on slide two, is we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's commonly referred to as a clean audit opinion. And that means that everything was materially correct based on all the testing that we performed with the financial statements as they're presented with our report. So that's again, commonly referred to as a clean audit opinion on the financial statements. And we actually issue three reports as a result of our audit. So one is the unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And then because we do the audit, conduct the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we also issue a report in accordance with government auditing standards. And that report would identify any material weaknesses in internal controls or significant deficiencies in internal controls, as well as any material instances of non-compliance that we're aware of. And we had none of those items to report. So there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies with internal controls over financial reporting or no non-compliance. And that would be non-compliance with state laws, regulations, things like that. The third report that we issue is a report in accordance with uniform guidance, and that's because you expended more than $750,000 in federal awards. We're required to conduct our audit in accordance with uniform guidance. We have an unmodified opinion on compliance. So you materially complied with all direct material laws with the major program that we tested, which was the American Rescue and Recovery Program. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control, but we do have a significant deficiency in internal control and an instance of non-compliance. So again, that instance of non-compliance would not deem to be material non-compliance. And that was non-compliance with the reporting requirements of ARPA. And just to add some context to that, so the financials that you maintained in your books throughout the year were correct. So it's nothing to do with reporting in your general ledger or anything. But what happened is there's a portal set up by Treasury that you report your ARPA expenditures on. And the cumulative obligations, there's a section called cumulative obligations and cumulative expenditures. So that's year-to-date expenditures. Accidentally, the amount reported was the total grant award amount and not what had been expended through year-end. And so it was basically just a misinterpretation of the rules of reporting by the Finance Director, and that will be cleared up on subsequent reports. So with all of this reporting with Treasury, when you have an error, something needs to be corrected, you just correct it prospectively. They don't require you to go back and refile or anything like that. So I expect that I'll be corrected going forward by the city. Does anybody have any questions about that? And I will say Treasury's portal is very complicated. The rules change almost every quarter. So you are by no means the only entity that will have this citation this year. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the audit reports? Okay. Moving forward with some other required communications to the commission. The city did implement a new accounting standard this year. So GASB 87, as it applies to leases, was effective for this year-end for the city. And this is similar to, some of you may be aware of the FASB lease standard that went into effect this year as well, is going to affect for this calendar year. Basically, it gets rid of the idea of operating lease and capital lease and brings all leases onto the books as a liability and a right to use asset. So as a result of this, the city did restate their financial statements, bringing on about $214,000 in long-term lease liabilities and an offsetting right to use asset. So the restatement did not impact net position at all, just brought that asset and corresponding liability onto your books. And then that will be recognized into expenses as you make those payments over the life of the leases. The leases that came on related to fleet, some fire equipment. To be clear, the energy improvement lease is set up as a lease. But that is not a lease in terms of GASB 87 because you're taking possession of all that stuff. So the HVAC improvements will become assets of the city. So under GASB, that's considered a finance purchase. So that did come on as capital assets and debt, but not a lease under GASB 87. So didn't want to muddy the waters too much there, but that's generally how that financial reporting worked. Some other things to note, there are no transactions which lacked authoritative guidance. Everything was very clear how it should be reported. There are no material misstatements to the financial statements, so no material audit adjustments were required. And we also had no disagreements or difficulties in dealing with management. Everyone was very helpful in providing us all the information that we need, including, you know, a lot of the departments that are not necessarily the finance department, but as we look at grants and other compliance, we get information from all different departments, and everyone was very helpful with us. Moving on to some of the financial statement highlights. Slide four looks at changes in assets and deferred outflows of resources. I'm going to be kind of repetitive as we go through the slides because really the main changes to a lot of the financial statement categories is from the energy improvement loan and related capital assets. So you see the capital assets increased citywide by about $8.8 million. A lot of that is improvements from the energy improvement loans. And then you see cash and investments increase. Some of that is from unspent proceeds from the energy improvement loans. Those are in escrow until you draw them to use them for further improvements. And then general funds saw an increase of about $1.3 million in fund balance. And the business-type activities saw an increase of about $2.9 million in their net position. Looking at slide five, changes in liabilities and deferred inflows. Again, you see payables increased by about $3.8 million, which is some of the energy improvement projects that were still being completed. And then that pension liability decreased by about $1.3 million. Keep in mind that the net pension liability is actuarially determined as of December 31st. So if you think back to January 1st, 21 through December 31st, 21, there are positive returns in the market for investment. So investment returns outpaced expectations for calendar year 21, which resulted in the net pension liability dropping. And then long-term obligations increased by $8 million, which is largely the lease purchase from the energy improvement lease. Slide six looks at net position at year-end for governmental activities. A more longer-term view, but you can see it's been pretty stable for the last five years. Rising slightly from 2020 to 2022, as you've made some investments in capital assets from some of the grant funding and things like that. Slide seven looks at net position at year-end. It breaks it out between categories. So the net investment in capital assets is the largest portion, $24.2 million. Your restricted portion of that position is 8.1 million. And you can see unrestricted is negative 4.2 million. Keep in mind that that's negative, similar to a lot of other local governments, because of the net pension liability that accounting brings on that entire net pension liability to the city. And really drives down the unrestricted net position. If you scrape off the net pension liability, you'd have a positive $13.3 million in unrestricted net position. Slide eight looks at the business-type activities. So these are your enterprise funds. And you can see that position has been increasing for the last few years and then decreased just slightly in 2022 to $46.1 million. And slide nine looks at the net position at year-end for business-type activities. Again, you can see the largest portion is your net investment in capital assets. That's all the infrastructure that allows those business-type activities to exist. Restricted net position is about $3.5 million. That's restricted mainly for debt service. And then your unrestricted is $371,000. Again, that sounds like a very small piece, but that is decreased as well by the net pension liability. Keep in mind, even though it's unrestricted, it is still intended to be used for those enterprise activities, those enterprise funds. Slide 10 looks at the same of activities for governmental activities. This is the full accrual basis of accounting. So again, the expenses side, I tend to discount on this slide. You see lots of peaks and valleys, and a lot of that's driven by the changes in the net pension liability and that related pension expense. The revenue is important. You can see an increase in revenue in 2021. That's mainly the CRF funding or the CARES Act funding. And then the ARPA funding kind of maintained that level of revenue in 2022. So that's where a lot of those changes come from. Slide 11 looks at the business-type activities. Again, the expenses are somewhat impacted by net pension liability, but not as much. There's not as many employees in the business-type activities. And you can see the expenses has increased again as you've made some investments in the last couple of years. And then the revenues have been fairly stable the last three years, right around the $10 million mark in the enterprise funds. Slide 12 looks at the general fund revenues and expenditures, and this is on the modified accrual basis of accounting. You can see revenues have been steadily rising up to $13.6 million in 2022. And then the expenditures, you see that large increase from 2021 to 2022. It went from $12.5 million to $15.4 million. Most of that is from the expenditures to City Hall under the Energy Improvement Bond. So how that is reflected in the financial statements is this is an other financing source. So it's not included in revenue. But it's an expenditure as you make those capital-outlay expenditures. So that's the main reason why expenditures increased in the general fund for '22 is those energy improvements that you've made. Slide 13 looks at general fund property tax revenue. You've seen, you know, increasing property taxes as property evaluations continue to go up. It's up from $5.2 million in 2021 to $5.7 million in 2022. Then all that contributes to the general fund balance at year-end continuing to increase, like many local governments, the last few years, you know, you've weathered the storm of the COVID pandemic. A lot of that's been supplemented by, you know, federal funding that's helped out a lot of local governments and really build up general fund and cash balances. So you're up to a $9.8 million general fund balance at year-end. That's also reflected on slide 15, the fund balance divided by total general fund revenues. We look at this just to see kind of the health of the balance of the general fund and how much of a year's operations the current general fund balance would cover. It's about 72% or 8.6 months' worth of operations in the general funds. The GFO would recommend that you maintain no less than two months and up to 12 months of your operations in your general fund to have a healthy general fund balance. And a lot of that, that's a wide range, but it depends on what your plans are for future investments and what your fluctuation of cash flows are, how large you want that balance to be. The next two slides, look at the major enterprise funds, wastewater and water. You can see operating income has been dropping over the last few years. Again, this is on the GAAP basis. You have $180,000 income in water with a $32,000 loss in wastewater for the year. The next slide is probably even more important to look at, though, is the cash flows. Ultimately, this is how you supplement your investments into the infrastructure and also pay off the debt. And you can see both water and wastewater have had positive cash flows. Wastewater had a positive cash flow of $1.9 million this year in operating cash and $1.7 million increase in, or positive cash flow from water operations. And to put in context kind of what that goes to, you had capital acquisitions of $2.4 million in wastewater and debt payments of $1.4 million in wastewater for the year. So that's where some of those positive operating cash flows go to. And in water, you had capital investments of $2.6 million and debt payments of $1 million. So again, that's where some of those positive operating cash flows go to payoffs, you know, some of those investments and debt payments. And that's all that I had to present today. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Well, Mayor, that went very quickly. More so than I had anticipated. So we have some extra time. If anybody else has any toppings, I don't know, Commissioner Gaus wanted to nail down when we're going to do our second meeting in January. Is that the one that conflicts with MLK Day?
Well, usually we, in the past, we'd always go meet on Tuesday of that day because everything's shut down and then, so we can keep on the same, you know.
Yeah. So if that's everybody's desire, then when we bring your 2023 meeting schedule, at the next meeting, we'll just have that meeting on the 17th. All right. With that, I'd open the floor for anybody else who has topics that you'd like to discuss tonight. Sure, that would be excellent.
Not at all. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor, commissioners, members of the public. My name is John Glouly. I serve as city attorney. The city of Adrian had a very good week and stayed in federal court last week. The first thing that I'd like to report is that a lawsuit pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Michigan or federal court against the city and one of the former commissioners was dismissed by Judge Nancy Edmonds in a very, what I would consider a well-reasoned opinion. We had been fighting with the local resident for several years now, who had made various complaints, all of which were dismissed by the court. So that was a very nice win, quite frankly. The second good fortune we had in court, we had a hard-fought trial this past week before Judge Scheidler in 2A District Court involving Crimson Holdings. Several months ago, the city of Adrian issued a violation in March of this year because of noxious odors which continued to emanate from the Crimson Holdings plant. In going until December 2021, the plant had been operating as a powdered milk processing facility. Beginning in December 2021, it converted to an egg processing facility. Basically, what Crimson Holdings did was receive eggs at that facility, many of which may have been damaged or things not suitable for the general public. They would then dry the eggs and convert them to powdered form, which would be used for pet food. The noxious odors were complained of by residents. The state of Michigan and the city of Adrian combined received well over 300 complaints. The state of Michigan began investigating even before the city of Adrian. The state of Michigan has been a tremendous help to Eagle and MDA. They've been a tremendous help. We had tried to, we adjourned the formal hearing for several times, hoping that Crimson Holdings would come to the city of Adrian and make some proposals to curb the noxious odors. Citizens living in and around the neighborhood had frequently reported smells of potentially bodies rotting, dead animals, an inability to live on or do things on their porch, having to keep their windows closed all year, things of that nature. When the state became involved, they recommended several plans of action. And according to the state of Michigan in testimony in open court, Crimson Holdings basically refused to implement any of those measures. After that, the state escalated enforcement against the city. The city issued its violation in March through Glenn Preston, and we, of course, continued to monitor the situation. The state, again, had made several recommendations to Crimson Holdings, as did Mr. Elliott. And all of those were rejected, and I suggest to you as primarily on an economic basis. They did not want to put the money into the processing facility to eliminate the odor. We have to remember that this case is different because nuisance actions are sometimes defended on the basis of residents, so to speak, coming to the nuisance. For instance, if that plant had been there for 20 years emitting odors and you move in, you're deemed to basically have knowledge of it and you accept the risk associated with the plant. This is totally different. This is an operation that began, as I said, in December 2021. Various meetings took place with the state. The state conducted inspections. We did drive-bys to no avail. And as a result, we had a mini-trial. We had a trial this past week. It was well-attended. Commissioner Gaus was there. Members of the media were there. We had at least five members of the public testify. We had a state official testify as well, Jennifer Dixon, the head air quality liaison for the state of Michigan. And she was extremely helpful, as were the other witnesses. I had advised both the court and Crimson Holding months ago as to what we were seeking, so as not to proceed to trial on ambush, that we were quite serious, that if they did not institute corrective measures, we were going to seek to shut them down. While it's not an ideal time to put anybody out of work around the holiday season, that was not our goal. Our goal was not to put anybody out of work or to cause headache during the holiday season. The goal was to allow the business owners and the residents of the community to enjoy their property as they have a legal right to do under our ordinances and the laws of the state of Michigan. Following the proofs, Judge Scheidler condemned the actions of Crimson Holdings, primarily pointing at corporate offices in Iowa in refusing to take the lead and refusing to assist the state of Michigan in working these things out and refusing to establish adequate technology. They were basically begging the judge through their testimony to withhold any injunctive relief, suggesting that they were going to install a new stack within the next four weeks. I suggested to the court that that was impossible and impractical, given that they had not yet even received drawings, that it had yet to be approved by the city, which I assume it's going to be by the ZBA, Board of Zoning Appeals, and that the state of Michigan had to approve the new stack as well. They were going to need to make structural changes to the building before installing a new stack. I personally don't believe a new stack is going to work to eliminate all the odors. I think it's going to push it, the odor farther downstream, and it more is going to need to be done. Judge Scheidler, I think, saw through a lot of these arguments, ruled as a matter of law that they were in violation of our ordinance. She did enter a judgment this morning that they were responsible for the ordinance. She also entered a judgment based on her ruling last week that Crimson Holdings would only be authorized to operate one 12-hour shift per day from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, that that injunctive relief would continue until the new stack was installed. Once the new stack was installed, Crimson Holdings would be able to operate the plant using their regular shifts as a review process by the city, the state, and the court. So Judge Scheidler is basically continuing jurisdiction on this matter. Whenever that new stack is installed and the review process begins, we will be out there. I can assure you that the state of Michigan is going to be out there. They've told us in no uncertain terms that they are going to continue with their aggressive enforcement action against Crimson, that other than the Stellantis plant on the east side of the state in Detroit, the Chrysler plant on East Jefferson Avenue, that this is one of the worst cases of odors that they are currently working on right now, and that it has continued and will continue. They are not, well, I won't speak for the state, but once that review process is undertaken, we will be able to go back to court to see whether or not it has worked. And we will be there with our team. The state of Michigan will be there monitoring things. And the health, safety, and welfare of the residents is the most important. The workers across the street in one of the buildings continue to complain to their general manager as well. That's important. We hope Crimson Holdings is going to step up to the plate, invest the resources that they need to, that they've committed to. They issued a press release earlier today that I vehemently disagree with. And I suggest they're probably going to take an appeal. And when they take an appeal, I suggest to you that all their good, their words in their so-called deeds, so to speak, isn't going to really mean too much. They want to basically continue to operate as they have done, continue to emit noxious odors into the neighborhood. That's my opinion. We will be ready when the appeal comes in. We will keep everyone very closely advised as to the progress of the appeal. But I think we're in the, I know we're in the driver's seat. I hope that the injunctive relief is upheld. The judge has the authority to order that relief. And we had a very, very good week in court.
John, where, if they do take an appeal, where does that appeal go?
In all likelihood, the appeal will be taken to the Lenawee County Circuit Court.
And that's their only appeal of right, is that?
Yes, that's right. That's a very good point. They have an appeal of right to the Lenawee County Circuit Court. I think that's favorable to us. If the judge affirms, Judge Scheidler's, if one, either Judge Olssaber or Judge, Chief Judge Anzalone affirms the decision of the district court, meaning that they're blocked for the time being, then they will have an appeal by leave. They will have to seek permission to go to the Michigan Court of Appeals. So they have one bite at the apple. It's an appeal as of right right now. I will notify you in writing as soon as a claim of appeal is filed. I think we have very good grounds to have the ruling of Judge Scheidler affirmed. And I don't think she's going to like, quite frankly, although they have the right to do so. I think it's a little disingenuous from there to have given clues that they're going to take an appeal.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John?
I have a couple of questions. So I assume this company, Crimson Holdings, has other plants, other similar plants elsewhere?
They, I believe, I do not believe that they have any similar egg processing facilities. However, we were told in chambers by the general manager, Mr. Hofbauer, that they intend to consolidate their operations in the city of Adrian. Whether that means more egg processing or different types of processing remains to be seen. But I was caught off guard a little bit by that. But I should remind everyone, as I said a few minutes ago, the state of Michigan is well-advanced, and they have the technical expertise to help the residents of the city of Adrian, and I have no doubt that they will continue in their escalated enforcement action.
So further on that, I've been in a number of meetings with both Eagle and MDA about this and through most of those meetings, it really seemed like everybody was just kind of grasping for a solution, but nobody really understood what the solution was. And then I had a fellow call me from Eagle two weeks ago, maybe now, before the trial. And he told me, well, there's one surefire solution. It's a system called an RTO system, reverse thermal oxidizer. That's what it stands for. But basically, what it means is that you incinerate the exhaust before it goes out the stack. And in doing so, that eliminates the odors that are present in it, older components that are present in it. There is only one other plant like this in the state of Michigan that dries eggs in the same process, and they use that sort of a system. So we were very strong before the trial in insisting on that or a commitment to go into that kind of a system if we were going to settle, which obviously we did not. You know, as John says, it remains to be seen if the You know, as John says, it remains to be seen if the stack going to 100 feet is going to work. When they first moved into that facility, they had a different sort of a stack than they have now. They had a stack that actually ran horizontal to the roof that had been there from the melt plant. And, you know, the current stack, I forget the height of it, but it's maybe 16 feet tall, was installed as the solution to the odors, problem there that was being experienced. And obviously, it didn't make any difference at all. So, you know, there's a, there's a process of them coming to the realization that operating in this fashion is going to need some additional technology that I don't think they've reconciled themselves to yet.
In fact, we had offered to adjourn the formal hearing last week, which they would agree to install the reverse oxidator process, and they refused. So they know of the technology. I personally think, as the judge indicated in her ruling on the record, that the almighty dollar may have caused certain decisions to have been made by corporate officers. And we know for sure that, and evidence was introduced to the fact that this has been going on for months and months and months with various contexts made by the state and the city to Crimson Holdings with no real change, with no real change. We had some very good lay witnesses who lived around the neighborhood, manager of the plant across the street. Hopefully, things are going to change in the not-too-distant future. The order goes into effect at the close of business on December 9. So unless a judge immediately reverses the ruling, December 10, they're only allowed to operate one shift per day, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Any other question?
Do, and I don't know if you can even answer this question, but do you feel like they want to make a change and stay in Adrian? Or do you, and if you can't, that's okay. Don't answer. Just like, people just have to live with it. We're a business. We make a mess. We make a smell and a well.
Well, part of their defense was that, a large part of their defense in this case that I took great issue with in court was that all of their activities should be allowed to continue because they were a farming operation and it was protected under the Right to Farm Act. I took tremendous disagreement with that theory of liability, as those in the courtroom would know. The judge found as a matter of law that they were not protected by the Right to Farm Act. They also suggested that they were entitled to immunity because of various MDA standards that had not specifically been in place for some time with regard to egg producers that are situated or in line with other types of agricultural facilities. I'm pleased to report that Judge Scheidler saw through those and even asked at one point whether or not they were contending that they have immunity. The attorney finally said yes. She asked at one point of their witness how the property was zoned. She said, this is not zoned agricultural, is it? You know, the witness said no. I advised the court as the appropriate zoning. So when a corporation comes in and argues that a plant operating within 50 feet of residences and commercial businesses that had been there is a farm and is entitled to relief under the Rights of Farm Act, I think and point out to the court that that's disingenuous, and they basically wanted to continue as they were. With this ruling, and I hope that they understand now that changes are going to have to be made. They've at least committed to a stack. There's more that's going to need to be done. For instance, they put chemicals in the, into the exhaust. They're called odor neutralizers to try to prevent or to, it's like one of those things you get at the car wash. You put in your car to eliminate the smell. While the state of Michigan has new research suggesting that oxidizers, I'm sorry, that odor neutralizers may not be very good for one's health, that they may expand and undergo chemical processes once they're introduced into the air. And they're doing further research on that as we speak. And that neutralizers will only affect at the most 20% of the odor going out. So we know those haven't been working very well because the odors continue. The state of Michigan drove by this past week in the morning of the hearing. They said the odors were outrageous, quite frankly. So more technology is going to have to happen. But Mr. Elliott, through his direction to me and the commission going forward is, if it doesn't work, then we're back to square one. We can issue another violation and make sure that the residents are protected and that the business complies with our ordinance, which is a legally recognized ordinance. It's a well-written ordinance. There's got to be compliance. It's a question of whether or not they want to expend the time and money to do it.
Do we know how many employees work there?
Yeah, there was some, a little bit of different testimony per shift. There was testimony, as few as four per shift, two shifts, 12-hour shifts per day. And then the testimony rose when they maybe got wind that the judge might be doing something to six to eight people per shift. But the initial testimony was that there were four people per shift. And look, again, it's not our goal to put people out of work during the holiday season. That had nothing to do with this whatsoever. We adjourned the hearings for them twice to try to do something over the summer once they were aware of the relief we are going to request. This is again about making life comfortable so people can have guests over, so they don't have to live with their windows closed. You don't have to worry that there's dead animals or corpses in their yard, that the fire department doesn't have to respond or runs, which they did this past week, complaining of noxious odors and thinking that there was something gravely wrong in the neighborhood as well.
Thanks, John. Is there anything else anybody would want to talk about during pre-meeting? If not, we can go into public comment, Mayor.
All right. At this time, we will begin public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside the city chambers first, and then we will open it up to Zoom participants.
Hi, Ashley Cavassos, Frank City of Adrian resident. I just wanted to, maybe someone can comment during Commissioner comment about the complaint, how citizens can complain about the smell, like the, I saw a form go out on Facebook. I don't know if those, continuing to send those in and record that data would be helpful going forward because we know how corporations are. They're going to fight it and continue to keep that data coming in. And like, I smell it all the way downtown. Sometimes I go out back and I'm like, am I in bliss field again? What is happening? So I just wanted to give you guys a chance to remember to do that and tell people where they can find that form. I know I saw it on the Facebook page at one point.
We will open it up to the Zoom participants if anybody would like to give public comment. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? And I guess that was actually going to be one of my questions I was going to ask you after, but I'll ask right now in front of everyone. Is that the process you want? Because I also, I literally work within a few blocks of this and have had many complaints as well from the residents because I literally work in the residential area. And so that's where I was directing them, but I didn't know if that's where they would continue. If it does continue, I have kept them apprised that they're going to start hopefully only working at night. And I was kind of trying to keep them aware because of the complaints, but.
Absolutely. If you smell an odor and you believe it's coming from there, and it is not simply a slight odor, you should report it. The state of Michigan under Eagle has a complaint form, and you're correct, on Facebook as well. I would encourage everyone, the state is, this is an open book with regard to the state of Michigan and the city of Adrian. Please, if you smell something, continue to report it no matter the time of day.
I would say that the state has its own processes that they're going through in terms of their enforcement. And so those continued complaints support them in their efforts to get relief up their front.
Thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned, and our regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. I now call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for December 5, 2022. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schreier.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, we will now have the recognition of our election precinct chairs by our city clerk, Robin.
Can the following individuals please form a line up front? My husband wrote this comment. Don't worry, you're not in trouble. Diane Bach, Pat Baker couldn't be with us tonight, Lisa Gillan, Sue Henry, Scott Marvin, Dave Perez, Carol Rice, and John Roberts. I've asked you to come up here so that we can give you the recognition that you've all earned and deserve. Sorry, I'm really nervous. The November 8, 2022 general election held the highest voter turnout for any midterm election in Michigan history. Your hours of dedicated and diligent preparation and training demonstrated your commitment to our American democracy and enabled the citizens of our communities to make their voices heard. You served honorably and with integrity at a time when many election officials were subjected to harassment and threats, born from misinformation and lies about Michigan elections. Indeed, on national television, there were political analysts airing their views that election officials should expect and prepare for violence. You pushed through all that rhetoric with long hours in the days leading up to and including Election Day, prioritizing the accuracy and sanctity of our election process. Although voter turnout was only about 39%, you were ready to accommodate all registered voters in the city of Adrian. What you achieved was obvious, obviously no small undertaking. You implemented a major legislative changes during a global pandemic while accommodating record-breaking voter turnout. You showed once again that you are tireless and highly ethical experts capable of executing safe, secure, and accurate elections, no matter the circumstances. By doing all of this, you helped make this one of the most safe, secure, and well-run elections ever, thereby voicing the public's faith in it, in the, in the American democracy. As you're all well aware, election challengers and poll watchers are allowed to be with us on Election Day. And while the election challengers at the absentee voter counting board and city hall seemed eager to leave as soon as the polls closed at 8, our day was not nearly complete. If I remember correctly, our receiving board cleared the absent voter counting board just before 2:00 AM on Wednesday morning. That's a 20-hour day. When the election challenger locked, the absentee voter counting board, the person commented, "After what I've seen today, I can assuredly say that the elections in the city of Adrian are in good hands." What more can I say? So in recognition of your character, your integrity, and your dedication to the cities, citizens of the city of Adrian and the surrounding area, please accept my certificate of recognition as a modest token of our deepest appreciation. We thank you for your service to our community, state, and country. You have upheld one of the basic principles that sets our nation apart, the right of every eligible citizen to make their voice heard by casting of a private ballot. You and your team of inspectors are the unsung heroes of our election process, and our democracy is stronger thanks to you. Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to have a proclamation. And if I can have the four members and their coach from the Adrian High School's Girls Swim and Dive 400 state championship relay team to come up to the front. Congratulations on your state championship, and I'm going to read the proclamation to you and then present it to you, okay? Whereas the Adrian High School Girls Swim and Dive Team 400 Freestyle Relay won the Division III State Championship on Saturday, November 19, 2022. And whereas the Maples 400 Freestyle Relay State Champion swimmers were senior Emily Hess, Italian Foreign Exchange student Francesca Scarbatola. Did I say that right? Okay, good. Junior Eleonora Andre and freshman Ella Solenbein. And whereas the relay qualified second in the preliminaries behind Mylin, but came back in the finals to defeat Mylin by 0.65 seconds. And whereas the Adrian High School, High School Girls Swim and Dive Team are coached by Robert Petkus, who was named the Southeastern Conference Coach of the Year and is in the running for the MHSAA Division III Coach of the Year. Now therefore, I, Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, do hereby congratulate the Adrian High School Girls Swim and Dive 400 Freestyle Relay Team of Emily Hess, Francesca Scarbatola, Eleonora Andra, Ella Solenbein, and Coach Petkus for their state championship. You have brought great pride to our community, and the city of Adrian recognizes the sacrifice, hard work, and many hours you have committed to reach this accomplishment.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. What great pride for our city. Thank you very much.
Moving on to our consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schreier.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent agenda jumped up.
We're both struggling tonight. I'm not sure why.
Consent agenda adopted by.
Under our regular, regular agenda resolutions, R22-075 is from engineering. It is a resolution to modify professional services agreement with Manic and Smith. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move the adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gou.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-076 is from FIRE. It is a resolution to approve service agreement with inspection reports online. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gou.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are a few reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? Moving on to public comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first and then open it up to Zoom participants. And just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit that you will see displayed. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin in chambers right now.
Hello, I'm Maken Ramos. I know, long time no see. 422 South Winter Street. And I just want to bring a couple of things up real quick. Of course, this Friday, second Friday, we'll be down at the library. And we hope to see some of you there. Of course, the community is welcome to come out. We're hoping to have a bit of engagement and very excited to be in the library. Also, other exciting things going on that day, this whole week and even during second Friday, if you're so inclined, you cannot take part in the library's gingerbread house voting. Friday is the last day, so if you don't vote before, make sure to come to second Friday so you can vote. That's all for now. Thank you.
Eric Collins, 11 Scott Court, Adrian. Baltimore County Commissioner, I just want to give you a little update on the county commissioner information as well be happening in the next month. As, as you may know, as you do know probably, there will be two new commissioners on the Illinois County Commission. We will set at the next board, next board meeting, what's called the organizational meeting for January. In the organizational meeting, the county commission will elect a board chairman and vice chairman. And that board person, that chairman will attach all of their positions. So just want to let you know the date will be posted on the website because it's not yet been selected, but that will certainly be coming up. Look forward to seeing you there.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. And those participants on Zoom also do need to state their name and their address and you will see your time on the screen. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I have several, so. Just bear with me a couple of minutes. So I'm really happy that we recognized the swim team tonight as, as a former swim team parent. The team of the four by four here was also took down our daughter's relay school record. And as we've discussed with a lot of people, it was nine years too long. School records are meant to be broken. And so we hope that next year, a new school record and a new state championship will be there. But it's very cool to have our swim team be so successful. So that's one thing. Commissioner Collins, you didn't state this. I was hoping you would, but we have a Lenaway County Communication Survey out there. In case you haven't received it yet, you can go to the Lenaway, Lenaway County face or not Facebook page. Well, maybe it's on their Facebook page, but on their website and it's a very short survey asking how we as residents would like to be communicated with. And I would strongly suggest that you put in your information. It's a free form, fillable form, so you can write whatever you would like. So please go out there and complete the survey for the county. On the consent agenda, you may have noticed that Commissioner Gordon Goss is, and has been elected to, to take the position as the commissioner on the planning commission. I'd like to just take this time right now to thank the planning commission and I will tomorrow night. I decided to step down from the planning commission to devote time to the citizens academy. So I really appreciate Commissioner Goss taking that spot so I can hopefully get that up and running for us. So thank you. And my last thank you is to our city staff and especially Michelle, even though she couldn't be there for our Christmas parade that was in the River Walk with Mr. Berryman last Friday, first Fridays. I don't know, maybe 5,000 people. There were so many people and everyone just it was so grateful and wonderful and it was an amazing night in downtown Adrian. So thank you, especially the city staff. I know Jay Marks and Tom, Matt Tomaszewski were there and I know there were a lot of DPW people around that I don't know their names. So thank you to everyone who put that on because it was amazing. So I think that's all.
Commissioner Gou.
Well, since our city clerk recognized all the election workers, I'd like to say thank you to her. It couldn't be done without her. She's, she's the head honcho when it comes to city elections and she always does a great job. And all the things that she recognized her poll workers for tonight, she can take the same credit. So thank you, Robin.
So I have a funny comment for the evening. Summer in on it already. So I was wearing a scarf tonight for a reason because I had former Mayor Jacobson reach out to me at the beginning of last week and asked if we wanted to do a friendly bet for to then, and it would go to charity because he is a Michigan grad and I'm a Purdue grad. And we are neighbors and we always have our flags displayed and we have a little sparring going on with this and as the former mayor and, and then the current mayor. So he thought this could be fun. And so the, the idea was his and it was that the loser had to wear the opposing team's shirt to the meeting. And that we would also, the loser would also be donating money to Housing Help of Lenaway, which I thought was a great idea and something that was very needed. So we, I jumped right on it. And so I've already donated the money, but yes, I am wearing a University of Michigan shirt as much as it pains me very much. So that is for you, former Mayor Jacobson. So I will never wear it again. I just want to make that very clear. It is, it is literally going to go on, it's going to my husband and he can wear it to do all the dirty work in the yard because I am never wearing this again. But it was, it was very painful. And I do want to point out that the first person to text me on the loss Saturday night was our own city administrator Greg Elliott to rub it in my face. That was the first text I got. So all, all, all in fun and in for a great cause and Housing Help of Lenaway is just doing great things in our community. So it was well worth it for that. And thanks to former Mayor Jacobson for reaching out and having the great idea. And we, we had a lot of fun with it. We were, we were displaying our yards and fighting on Saturday. So it was fun. But with that, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.